Good morning, everyone. We call this special work session meeting to order. Welcome to all of you. It's nice to see folks joining us this morning. And we have a great presentation ahead. I want to welcome Mr. Baber. Glad you're here with us today, too.
Thank you very much.
If you would, please stand with me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, I'll turn it over to you.
Good morning, everyone. This morning, the first item will do a review of the referendum in the webpage. And I wanted to keep the board informed of what we've done. Doug is here. Doug is the chair of the referendum committee, so he may have some comments as well. When I'm finished with that, then Helen, Dr. Wild, is going to make a presentation on the mental health instruction for the board. And then we have two LOUs for the board today that the board will vote on. Depending upon where the timing is then, we may have a brief presentation on the school hardening grant where we received, how much? Seven hundred and five thousand dollars on that. So we'll display it by year. We have a brief presentation on that. So what I wanted to show you today is the district page, and maybe you've seen it and maybe you haven't, but we've met two times with the committee, with the oversight committee. So if you go to the district homepage and you scroll down and you come right here where it says referendum information, you click on that. And then this pulls up our referendum information page. Over here to the right, you can see you're appointee. And everyone, I believe everyone was at the last meeting. I think the first meeting only Ms. Loop was absent because she had a previous commitment. And so we have the committee meets. Chris takes minutes, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I know she's writing when she's in there, so I assume it was minutes. And we take the minutes. And so when we had met the last time, this page looked a lot different. This page was really just a lot of words, but we didn't have any pictures. And one of the suggestions from the committee was, let's put some pictures up with what we're doing. So you can see the two, they're both the same here in the room that are on the sides on Eastals as well. So this is kind of like a district page, but for each school center, we will have pictures at the school that will be in their front office, as well as possibly at the pickup line, drop-off line, that'll be pictures that are unique to that school center. So it'll be their students. It may be their students singing. It may be, whatever it is, it'll be unique for that school center. And we're working on those now. Lydia is working on those. So here we have this on our page. You see the appointees. We have the information on the referendum and the election. Can you believe it? Ten months ago. I mean, that's flown by. We'll start campaigning, I guess, soon. But two years, three, it'll be here before you know it. And then what we have here, you'll see the teacher salaries. And I don't know if, I know David's in the building. He's probably meeting with Dr. Prince right now. But this was the information when we worked out with the Education Association, which is now the new CTA. So that's there. We came down, again, we put some more photographs here. On this side, we have the ballot language itself, exactly what was on the ballot. And then we have pictures here of the different school centers. We talked about the mental health aspect of it and the dollars that we got. And I'll speak more to that in just a moment. But we've got, I believe, we are up to nineteen social workers, correct, Bill? And we only have one open position for a behavior specialist and one for behavior techs, because those are in high demand. And then we talked about the fine arts. And we had one percent of the dollars that go to fine arts. And I'll show you this in a minute. You're going to get blown away in a second here. And then, so each school receives an allocation. And we tried to try to do it based upon what's written there. The dollars were allocated based upon the courses of the students and what they would be taking. And then there was a committee to determine, to make sure we had equity across the school board. Again, here's some photographs of students in the fine arts. And we come down to school security. Some of these pictures you all have seen before. This is the part that we're very excited about, how we're spending the money. And so when I come over here and seventy percent of the dollars, I click on, or I put the mouse right over here on the seventy percent, you can see that sixteen million eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars was allocated to go for teacher salaries. And then when I click on the pie chart itself, this will come up to each school. All right? So if we go to Windmill Elementary, you can see that Windmill was allocated three hundred and ninety-six thousand six hundred, a hundred dollars. And that shows what they've spent up to, up till, this is really, that data is up until the winter break. And then at the quarter break, at the end of the nine weeks, that will be updated again. So each quarter, we update this. Does that make sense to everybody? So I go to White City, you'll have that information. I go to Westgate, you have the information. And so it's, you know, just a little bit of a lagging indicator based upon the end of the nine weeks or the end of the quarter. And you can click on each one of our, each school center, and you'll see that. Okay? You like that?
Yeah.
All right? That's nice transparency.
And that is just for teacher salary?
That's for the teacher salary piece. And then when we come in here and I go for the school security, all we have in school security really is that the over six million dollars, where we have an officer on every campus and two on the high schools. We don't break it down by school, because that's self-explanatory. We get into the mental health aspect. We see again, almost a million dollars that's there and what that supports. But what I wanted to show you is when we get into the special programs, we have two hundred and forty thousand dollars. When we click on that, then again, this will come up for each school. So if I go over here to Windmill Point, you can see that Windmill Point got almost two thousand dollars. And you can see that they bought musical instruments and art supplies. And that'll again be updated every quarter, because they haven't spent their money yet. Give you an example, go to Westgate, they've spent almost, you know, seventy-nine hundred out of eighty-one, musical instrument, art supplies, weather be, musical instruments, musical instruments, Treasure Coast High School, supplies, a dance floor, instruments and play scripts. So each school, how we've spent those dollars are there. And you can just, you know, you can hit each one. Your parent groups can, you know, PTA, SAC, whatever they want to do for the general public as well. It's very, very transparent. And then what we'll do, and we shared this with the committee as well, when we met about a month ago, and they were very impressed with this. And so this is total transparency as the board and as we promised in our campaign for the whole school district and where every dollar is going. We will meet again with the committee, I believe it's in July, at the end of the fiscal year. So we'll be able to have the closeout this year and then to see exactly where the dollars went and then what the anticipated revenues will be coming from the mileage increase for next year. Any questions? From anybody?
Have you had questions from the, Madam Chair, excuse me. Have you had questions from the community or reporters or nobody's really questioned?
We haven't had, I'm not aware of anything. I'd like for Doug also, since Doug sits on the committee as the chair, to chime in. I meant to do that before I asked for questions.
Hi. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. School board members, Doug Baber, Human Resources Director for St. Lucie County, as well as the chair for your referendum. First thing I'd like to say is just like to congratulate each of you for your selections for the people on our committee. There's a great group of educators and people from the community, a well-rounded group of people that are, that have great ideas. Mr. Jenp rolled this out to us, and the chair was there in January. It was just awesome to see the transparency. They, we, the school, the committee actually came up with some ideas about these, you know, getting these signs out onto the streets. It kind of goes along with what the county does and the cities do with their sales tax initiative. You see those signs everywhere, you see what's coming. So you know that your dollars are being spent well, so that the people in the community agree with the things that you guys are doing and why we're doing it. So I applaud you guys for that, for getting all the word out. I think that'll really help the pickup lines and things of that nature. I do know that each one of the members that came in that you guys had appointed had some great ideas as related to whether it was fine arts or security or things of that nature. So again, I think that they did a great job with coming up with some of the ideas. And Mr. Jenp and his team with the website, I think that that is very transparent. So I think that that is really great. I'd be glad to answer any questions about it, but I think that you guys are going in the right direction, and it's the oversight. So I really think that's great. And I think that maybe that's why we didn't get any questions from anyone yet, because you are ahead of the curve where some others have not been.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Barber.
Yes, ma'am.
I do agree that we need to get the information out more even to the, more so even to the public. So if the committee would continue to think of ideas that would not be, would put a burden financially on the school district of ways that we can get this information out to the community. I appreciate it.
I agree. And we actually spoke about possibly bringing some of this stuff to the county commission meetings or the city commission meetings with some kind of a PowerPoint where you show off this type of information. And that was the last talk, I think, that Mr. Jenp had talked about. We'd get through the year and be able to have a full year reporting, you know, for the first of the four years. So I think that you're correct, yes, ma'am. I think that those avenues are available. You know, we can do a lot of those kind of things to get in front of it. Maybe it's something that you pair with your awesome graduation rates and things of that nature, so.
Cool. We appreciate your leadership on that committee, too. Thank you.
It's all Mr. Jenp. I'll give it all credit.
No, it's all the committee.
No, it's the committee. That's right. That's right. One of the other suggestions is for the audience to know, you know, so many of our schools do plays and musicals and all of that sort of thing. So one of the other suggestions was to actually on the playbills, put, brought to you in part by referendum dollars, so that it's a piece of, a momentous piece that goes home and, you know, you show grandparents and all the other folks. So, you know, they've got some good innovative ideas, so we appreciate that.
I think it's really great for everybody in the community. I think that, you know, it's every dollar that you guys have raised for this goes a long way in the eyes of them.
Yeah.
I mean, I have two, I have small children, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I also, I want to thank that, I want to thank Lydia and Terrence and Michelle and Raphael and their individual departments, because to gather this information and to pull it together, you know, they did a fantastic job with that. And, you know, like I said, any, anyone can go on here at any time and see exactly where every penny is going for this. And so in fact, I shouldn't share, I, this is, Michelle, she's here. I'd like to pick on her a little bit. I think it was, there we go. C.A. Moore spent one more dollar than they were allocated.
We'll get that next year.
We'll figure that out. I'm going to give it to him.
Yeah.
Dr. Prince, pull that out and take care of that.
That's a plate.
But again, I can't say enough about Doug's leadership, too, and the committee members there. It's, the chair is on, this is, Holly has been there, was at the meeting as well for two meetings. And the interaction, it's a great committee. The interaction, everybody offers input. Sometimes you get community meetings and members and nobody will speak. And they're very actively engaged, which is exactly what we want to ask, good questions and had great suggestions that we hadn't thought of. Normally, we think, we think of everything, but they did a great job. So we're very, very pleased with this and was really, you know, excited about presenting this to the board today. Ready to move on?
Sir?
Okay. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, guys, very much. Have a great day.
Eight thirty in the morning.
Yes, ma'am. I'll be. All right, Doug. Thanks a lot. Thank you, Doug.
Did you choose the colors? I don't know. I don't know. I see you. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I matched.
Turn it over to Dr. Wild now with our new instructional requirements for mental health education. And you have that in a handout as well.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Madam Chair, board members, Mr. Jenp. Happy to be here today. Today I am sharing some important information on some new required instruction in St. Lucie Public Schools or across the state of Florida. And I wanted to give you an update as to where we are in the implementation of these new requirements and make sure that I could answer any questions you might have. This year was a very unusual year, because three new required instruction state board rules were passed and without legislation. These were passed by the Board of Education only. And they relate to mental and emotional health education, substance abuse education, and child trafficking prevention education. All three of them have some things in common. One is that they all required an implementation plan be submitted to the Department of Education by December one of each year, including this year. And these passed in September, October, so it was a really quick turnaround time for that. Every year, we will be required to submit an annual report by July one, sharing how we implemented each of these three new rules and with some details. The plans were submitted, revisions are permitted. And this is evolving, and I'll explain that as we go through. The implementation plan, the one that was due December first for all three, was required to explain what specific courses we would offer this instruction in and what grade level, the qualifications of the individuals delivering the instruction, and a description of the instructional materials that we selected. We did a lot of preliminary work in that time between these bills passing, these laws passing, rules, and the plan being due. And we worked cross-departmentally. There was a lot of work with Bill's department in Student Services and some of his expertise, and also within curriculum and some instructional technology support for the curriculum. We also brought together a group of school-based administrators, some of which had backgrounds in counseling and had an increased interest in these topics, to talk about what would be the best way for delivery. We surveyed the schools and really collected, what are we currently already doing that meets any of these three requirements within our schools? And there, we had to look for things that were doing everywhere in every school. We have a lot of supplementary activities that go on as well. And then we spent a lot of time communicating with DOE and other districts and talking through this. And we reviewed a lot of available curriculum. But since it was passed quickly with little warning, there was not a lot out there. Right now, a lot of vendors are responsive to this new requirement. For mental and emotional health education, this is the only one that has a specified number of hours. It requires five hours of annual instruction for every student in grade six through twelve. So this one is secondary only, related to mental health, youth mental health awareness. And this is separate from the requirement for all staff members to be trained in youth mental health first aid. And people are confusing the two. This is instruction for students. The instruction must include many variables, and I'll just give you a second to look at these. It's primarily about awareness and prevention. And this is the second half of them. You will notice that the very last one is about addiction, alcohol, nicotine, and drugs. There is a lot of overlap between the substance abuse requirement and the mental health one, and even some in the child trafficking. So for the mental and emotional health education one, ultimately, we decided for this year that we would do a combination of ways to deliver this content, primarily classroom lessons. And that was one of the things the administrators felt strongly about, that these should be done in classrooms, so that there was adult interaction with students on these sometimes sensitive topics. We are using an online digital personalized curriculum for this through EverFi. That is a program that we're already familiar with. We use it in economics. And then we're using follow-up classroom lessons, where there's that interaction. We already had a very strong signs of suicide program in place for ninth grade only through Student Services, so that work continues. Also, some of the five hours is made up with assemblies that happen school-wide. This year, every school did, starts with Hello, which is some foundational skills on these topics. And then either the Note Program or Operation Prevention, which is still ongoing right now, and Heather Clark in charge of that initiative. And those are assemblies about substance abuse for students. And then with awareness, we want to supplement all of this work with public service announcements, some of them school-created. For the instructional piece, in grades six through eight, this year, we will be doing it through social studies, science, and then social studies. That's sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. In ninth grade, through freshman seminar, through 10th grade in social studies, and 11th and 12th in ELA. And we did a lot of training. This is, these are the classrooms where the EverFi classroom instruction will take place, as well as the follow-up instruction of the counselors. So it's not these teachers delivering the instruction, it's through their classrooms that the instruction is delivered. We did train all of the teachers, though, so that they could facilitate the software program, understand it, answer questions, as well as know what to look for and who to call if a student needs any additional counseling or support. And the assemblies will be attended by students from all of their classrooms. We also shared with the teachers that in those subject areas, there are health standards embedded. Oddly, especially in ELA, there are a lot of health standards embedded into the English Language Arts curriculum. So we did point that out to the teachers as well. So that was the mental health one. On that one, I do want to share that we did train the guidance counselors, the school counselors, as well on the follow-up lessons. We went through, we created the lesson plans for them. We went through them, gave them a chance to make them their own, make any changes they wanted to. The feedback was very positive. They felt very comfortable. They appreciated that this is a proactive approach to mental health issues that they're seeing in their students. So we really did get a very positive response. We also worked hard, because we only had a half a year to implement this, we worked hard to make sure that the burden was not on any one group of people, because it was unexpected that they would have to implement this. So we spread it out over a lot of people to get this work done. And that's true for all three. Okay. For the substance abuse health education, this one is K through twelve. There is not an hour requirement. The instruction, though, must advance each year developmentally and be appropriate for the age group. For us, we are doing grades K through four during their PE time by the PE teacher primarily. And we did pull all of the PE teachers together on a PD day, and that went very, very well also. Fits in very nicely with the curriculum. In grade five, we have Too Good for Drugs. That's a program we already have in grade five, so that meets the requirement. Grade six through eight in social studies, science, we will, it overlaps with the EverFi curriculum, so that takes care of it. That's the curriculum I mentioned earlier. Same with ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th. In grades K through four, we are using a curriculum called KidsHealth.com. It's got articles, it allows for discussion. We selected them per grade level, and then we got feedback from the teachers to make sure they felt it was appropriate for each grade level. I've already gone over everything else on the rest of that slide. And the last area is the child trafficking area. And this is the requirement in child trafficking. Same thing, annual, and that the curriculum must advance each year. And these are all the things that we must cover. There's no hourly requirement, so however we approach this, we just need to make sure that we cover each of these. So we used crosswalks and made sure that nothing was left out of our plan. And how we're doing this is also direct instruction in K through five. K through five, this will be through the guidance counselor. This, I keep saying guidance counselor, school counselor. The school counselor will do the instruction. And this is curriculum we were already using. And we were using Safer Smarter Kids for other things. We did a crosswalk. So now we're just requiring that they do the appropriate lessons. They select the right ones to meet this requirement. And then in grades six through eight, it is part of our health curriculum in the science program. Science teachers are being trained on this curriculum. And in ninth through 12th, we're going to do two school-wide lessons on the topic and deliver it through Canvas, which is our program for learning management system for lessons. Safer Smarter Kids is the K through five. Teen Safety Matters is the curriculum that we're using for secondary. It's by the Monique Barr Foundation. And our school counselors, psychologists, and social workers are alerted to when all of this instruction is taking place, so that they are available to provide support. We did do all of this training. We trained the administrators to make sure they were aware and could answer questions. All of the teachers involved have been trained on the rule requirements and the EverFi. And the instruction has already started, and we've already started collecting feedback from the teachers. And then the counselors had several trainings on this. The next steps are getting shorter, because we've done so much already. We will be developing a new plan for next year. This year's plan didn't differentiate between grade levels, especially in the mental health, due to the time factor. And we also have more options available next year, because we have a full year to do the instruction. So possibly some of the classrooms might change. And we are looking at other curriculum programs that are available now that differentiate for each grade level. So we'll be making a transition into year two. And so that work is ongoing right now. We are continuing to collect feedback. We will be evaluating it. And then, of course, we'll have to put together our July one report to DOE. Any questions about any of those three?
Madam Chairman, I have a couple of questions. I know it's not the law, but mental health starts because there's probably an incident that happened and it's partly a reaction. I haven't seen physical abuse or sexual abuse. Can you elaborate what we do, maybe at another time? Because people have asked, and I'm just like, ah, I talked to Dr. Wild. But I would hate to say that it's because it's not law, we don't teach it.
Right.
Because in order, you know, again, there, for every, actually, there's a reaction. And that's probably some of the mental health that we have. So we would like to go ahead and teach it and have counselors trained for that. But I don't know what we offer.
Right. And in terms of instruction with all students, which these three rules are about instruction, there are warning signs, there are triggers that are taught in the developmentally appropriate age groups. So it does talk about what types of things can happen to students, what types of trauma they can experience that might trigger some of these reactions, including substance abuse and being susceptible to child trafficking and so forth. So teaching them all the foundational skills that they need, refusal skills, how to get help when they've experienced trauma, like you're referring to, that is all part of the curriculum. In terms of the training for individuals and handling it, youth mental health first aid does touch on that for all staff members. But honestly, our school counselors and our mental health counselors and our social workers and our school psychologists have advanced training on how to handle those things. So we do have personnel available. It's making sure that everyone knows how to access those resources.
It's one thing, but once you start talking about it as an open group, I mean, the reality of it is, all these are up here because it's a hot button for our legislator.
Yes.
You know, not many of us know that we're human traffic. You know, for us to spend thirty-five, and pardon me, I don't want to sound crass, but I think our bang for our buck would be more for sexual abuse or a kid being physically abused, and you taught that lesson, would probably reach our masses of students as opposed to those human traffic. But human traffic is the buzzword of today, society and churches and everywhere. But, you know, that's just my opinion.
Yes. And actually, when you look.
And I know everyone's trained, and I know everyone's supposed to look for it.
Yes.
But it's the silent kid that doesn't say anything.
Mm-hmm.
It's that kid that's hurting the worst. And if he hears something and it's directed toward him, in my experience, they're more willing to talk and find someone, because that conversation was brought to the forefront in a curriculum.
You're right. And it often is the silent child. You're absolutely right. And I lost what I was going to say in response to the first part. Sorry.
It's fine. I just wanted to voice my opinion, you know? It really upsets me when I see, we're going in the right direction, but.
I know. I know what I was going to say. Even in the child trafficking requirements, if you look a little bit deeper into it, the skills that are taught within there, they apply to all of these, including physical abuse and emotional abuse at home. In terms of how to handle the situations, you'll see it's not just specifically trafficking. And some of it, a lot of it, is internet safety and social media safety and how to be cautious and careful and talk to your parents or a trusted adult. So it's not just child trafficking, even in the child trafficking requirements.
Well, as a conversation starter, the Me Too movement, one person steps up and then the next person steps up, and then they feel comfortable about talking like that. That's why, that's why I feel that this curriculum of sexual abuse and physical abuse is so important.
Madam Chair. And also, you mentioned emotional abuse, because a lot of children, and not in the home, in the home, too, but more so than we even realize in the home, but also on the school campus. And what are we doing to cover that, where children can talk about it, you know, in groups, et cetera? That it's wrong to emotionally hurt another human being? So where's that?
You're right. And hurting other students and bullying is part of this as well. I did not mention, and I, I should have, this also ties into the SEL curriculum that we also implemented without that requirement. Is someone saying that behind you? The, the social emotional learning-
Everybody wants to talk now.
The, the SEL curriculum that we have put in place certainly does address that, and we actually looked through that entire curriculum as well when we did this work and looked for crosswalks.
Yeah, Dr. Wiles is exactly right. That's the big part of the SEL, the social emotional learning, is being able to open those doors for kids where they have the time to do those morning circles, to be able to talk about things that are going on, and to have specific topics that are directed to them and give them an opportunity to speak and further question, and then us to provide the resources that will provide help for them. We've expanded in this district tremendously our linkages to the Mental Health Collaborative that will also show resources available for children, and our expansion of adding mental health counselors in schools to support the work that the school, certified school counselors are doing, and our social workers and school psychologists. It's all benefiting the kid. And as we continue more and more with the expansion of social and emotional learning, you start to see more kids coming forward with understanding that it is a safe environment, and I can develop relationships and, and work to, to express and to know how to get help if there is something going on.
If I may, Madam Chair. We also, you have the, the ability to refer. Now, if given to the court, we have, you know, hibiscus as the court order, so, and we have the CAT teams, right? What we do not have yet is, we are headed, we are ahead of the curve. Our community's resources have not yet caught up. We cannot find psychiatrists to work with kids that are in deep trauma yet. And we know that when we back it out, the deep trauma often comes from what Mr. Ingersoll's talking about. So the district can only do so much. The rest of us in the community have to work, Ms. Holly and I are on a, on a couple of boards dealing with mental health. So the community has to step up and start pulling their resources and, to be able to do that, because the assumption is, now that they're talking about it, all of a sudden it started to occur. Well, that's not true, it's always been there, they just never felt comfortable to talk about it. And having the appropriate number of people to actually be able to work with those individual children is something that we, as a community, is going to, we're going to have to work on.
Just, Madam Chair, and from a pre-K level, it's extraordinarily frustrating for me. There is nothing out there. My families that don't have Medicaid trying to find an ABA to work with kids that have been traumatized, the state needs to step up. I mean, this is really ridiculous, the amount of children that I deal with that have been traumatized, foster care children and so forth. I mean, it's pretty frightening right now when I deal with children of what Troy is talking about. There's not, there's not a lot out there, and when I call, it's a waiting list for types of teens, waiting lists. So I go to the parent and say, you're on the waiting list, help me behave, there's a waiting list. So it tells me as a state, we're not doing the job we should do, and we all know that it starts long before children get into VPK or kindergarten. These kids have been traumatized. DCF is overwhelmed to the point they can't do one more thing. So we, as a community, have to find a way, but I am, I am very frustrated in trying, you know, I'm not a psychologist, and yet I feel like I'm trying to pull people in. And so then, by the time these children get into kindergarten, we, as a school system, are supposed to fix everything. And had it been done early when the trauma happened, I have a little girl now that is a, a three-year-old who witnessed a situation with a drive-by shooting. Ooh, I'm sorry, that's me. And I did turn it off, I promise. And trying to find help for her, she's having eating problems and all these endless problems, and yet trying to find that help for her is, is so frustrating for me, because she, you know, she's going to be going to kindergarten, and what are, what are we going to do when this child comes in and that kindergarten teacher is not prepared because we didn't fix it at the front end? We're constantly trying to fix things at the back end after they've already occurred, and we're, we're just playing catch-up all the time.
Madam Chair.
I want to first thank you for your, for your work, and I know that we've come a long ways, and I hope to, to see the day. My, my big thing is that children many times cause trauma to children emotionally, and where a child would not want to even come to school because they're being tormented verbally, and it doesn't even have to be physically. And so I hope to see the day when we really, that, that number can really, really go down, because that, that concerns me. Every time a child goes to school, I like for them to have a safe place from other children, not from adults or other, but from their peers. So thank you so much for your work and your service, appreciate it.
As we build that culture and climate in the school of acceptance and tolerance and diversity and helping children understand about what we are about and how to access services and supports in schools, and to really take advantage of the social and emotional aspect of what we're trying to do, where we've seen the time devoted to the circles and community circles and what's happening in the classroom, we've seen tremendous change so far.
Okay, and I like what you said, helping the child to understand. Thank you.
I, I, this is, with Bill taking off and Helen, this has been a major undertaking, because it's the result of state legislature, and so it's kind of like this year is the first year, so we kind of had to throw this out, put this on our schools, you know, in the second half of the year, once we got all the rules and everything from the state. Next year, we'll be, we'll have the entire year for the rollout, so we can do a lot of these things in the, in the fall as well. But one of the things I'm very proud of in the district is our, is our culture and trying to establish a single district culture, and it starts, you know, it's, it's modeled by the board, it's modeled by district staff, and it's in each school center. And so they have done a remarkable job and a model for the rest of the state, so I just want to say thank you to them. Because this is, you know, every year from the, I mean, this is good stuff. This is stuff that we should be doing with our stu-, our, our children, and it's a step in the right direction, you know, but then it gets added on, and, and so then they have to scramble on what we're trying to do, you know, and, and incorporate this during the academic year, but they've done a masterful job with that. So I just want to say thank you to both of them and their teams and their staffs for So we'll move on to the, if, with the chair and board's permission, we'll move on to the third, Terrence was up all night, and Terrence, come on up and give us a little bit of school hardening. Oh, we're doing this? Oh, okay. David, you still here?
Yeah, he's still here.
David awake? All right.
Okay, I just have two letters of understanding that are on today's agenda to, to go over very quickly. I only have one slide per LOU, but I do have additional details if anyone is interested. The Best in brightest awards program changed completely this year, it looks nothing like it used to look. And so we have been very, very careful in this work to make sure that, that we understand the law, handle it correctly, and pace it out. There were some parts of it that were just very clear in legislation, and there were some parts that we negotiated. And so we did work with our union partners all year on this. The, the three components now are the retention award, the recruitment award, and the recognition award. And the retention award is only available to classroom teachers at, in our particular district, twenty schools. So the state-defined criteria for which schools would qualify for this additional bonus, and it had to do with going up nine percentage points over, over a three-year period. So that list will change every single year, but it goes back three years. And for those schools, the retention award allocates 2,500 for highly effective classroom teachers and 1,000 for effective classroom teachers. I did not put it on here, but it's also 5,000 for the principals of those schools if they are in at least their fourth year at that school. So they have to have overseen that entire three-year period to be eligible. We have seven of our 20 that are receiving that. At the 20 schools, those teachers that, to be eligible for that, they have to be in their second year at that school. They have to be their last year and in their second year. So that was the retention award, that one was laid out in statute. I'm going to refer back to it in just a second. The recruitment award is for new hires to the district, and it was for an amount up to $4,000. We decided to give 2,000 in this area. It's a very small number of teachers in our district that qualify because of how they defined content expert. The state board established the rules for what a content expert is. It has nothing to do with being certified in the subject areas. It is only for reading, math, science, technology, and civics, those subjects. And within those subjects, you have to have a master's degree with certain courses or five years of work experience in those fields. So we worked with Marla in HR to determine who those people were. Some of the data that they put in content expert is not even data that we typically collect. So there was a lot of going through individual files of employees to determine who qualified. So for this year, although we expect this might go away entirely, but for this year, the recruitment award was very small impact on St. Lucie. The recognition award was the area that we had more negotiation around, and we determined that we would give it to the non-classroom teachers at those 20 schools, those same 20 schools where the classroom teachers got 2,500 and 1,000. We're doing the same thing for the non-classroom teachers, highly effective and effective, 2,500 and 1,000. And then, we know we like to, to spread our opportunities for bonuses around as much as possible. All of the remaining funds will go to all remaining classroom and non-classroom teachers in the district who are effective and highly effective, and they will receive a bonus amount based on how much is left, and that is actually in the legislation. So for us to be sure that we don't run short or miss anybody, we are paying the first two no later than April 1st, and the last one no later than May 1st. So we want to make sure that we give the charter share, they get a share of their money, give them their money, pay out those first two bonuses. Once that is complete, and we know that there's no, no controversy around any of them, then we will pay out the recognition award. All of these are also inclusive of the employer costs, that, so it'll be taxed as a bonus plus the employee benefits will be taken out of it as well. So when we send this out to people, they will know exactly their, their bonus amount ahead of time, so that they understand that. We have found in the past that if we are out in front and tell people what will be their, their bonus amount, it, they really know what to expect and it goes better. So we're doing that with all three of these.
Madam Chair, so Ms. Wiles, the, the content expert, did you say either/or to qualify? You said either four to five years teaching that subject, or, I heard you say, or, not and, the master's degree?
Yeah, there's, there's a master's degree with that content or five years of work experience, not teaching work experience.
They don't have to have a master's degree, but five years of working-
With a bachelor's degree, they have to have five years of work experience in the field, which is different than teaching experience.
With the master's.
With the, if you have only a bachelor's degree.
With the bachelor's degree.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So we went through every file of every new teacher who is currently teaching one of those pre-designated subjects. For example, for the reading, you could have a master's degree in ELA with literature-based and be considered a content expert in reading. However, you'd be out of field for reading, because that is not the certification requirement for reading. So we hire for being in field for certification. And these are brand new as well.
Madam Chairman, just really quickly, when you say classroom teachers, is that core classroom, or is that band?
It's, it includes band. It's everybody who's in front of a class. It does not include deans, counselors, instructional coaches.
Signed kids.
Mm-hmm, correct.
And secondly, I'm always unsure if you said it, you talked about dividing, giving out the money. Is it going to be one-time check, or is it going to be two?
It is going to be, what did we do?
Just because I'm going to be asked, and I only want to be-
It's going to be-
One time.
One time, okay.
It's a one-time check.
People ask us, and then I'll be like, ah, save me some phone calls.
Yes, for this one, it is a, a one-time check.
Madam Chair, were the 20 schools notified? Is it made public so teachers are aware?
Yes, the, the 20 schools have been notified. I have the list right here, if I can pass it around to you if you want.
Please.
Or I can read it.
No, no, no.
Well, so basically, this is given to teachers that happen to be lucky enough to be at a school that raises score, not based on their teaching ability necessarily, because you may be a great teacher at a school that overall was unable to make the score.
Correct, because you could be highly effective at a school that's not on that list. The idea of making you be there in your second year is that you contributed to that work, but you're only in your second year, so you contributed to the last year of the three-year cycle.
So, Madam Chair, can I say thank you to you and your team, because this was extraordinary work to have to go through one by one by one, teacher to try and find, you know, where, I, I mean, it, it seems to me the state continually does things so convoluted that it's almost impossible to follow, which maybe there's a purpose in that as well, because then if you mess up, you can be penalized.
This is, this one was a lot more complicated than it looked at base value, and, you know, I need to give credit to the ITS department, they did amazing work helping us to pull the data, and then the HR department when it came to the recruitment award, because that was a file by file.
Amazing. Yeah.
Yeah. So that list of 20 schools is, is going around, it's, it's in, it's embedded in some other work of mine, but do you, can we move on to the next one, or did you?
Is there, oh, we could all get a copy of this 20-
Absolutely.
We'll get the teacher, as soon as we're done.
Yes, I'll email you in a few minutes.
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay.
So before we move to the next LOU, could we receive your recommendation on this, please?
Yeah, recommend approval, I submit it.
Okay, we have the recommendation, board members.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Okay. And the, the last LOU for today is related to our calendar. In weeks recently, we were getting a lot of concerns expressed by teachers and by principals about the fact that April 1st was previously scheduled early dismissal day. It is also the day that then the state designated as the required first day for third-grade ELA reading. And as you know, third-grade reading is high stakes for the child as well as the schools, and we wanted to make sure that the students had a full day. Our ELA and ESE students, one of their accommodations is that they get a full day, so we did not want the first required day of reading to be a shortened day. So we did contact our union partners, and they readily agreed that that was not ideal for our students or for our teachers. And so we worked out a plan to, to not have April 1st be an early dismissal day, and for this year, we decided not to add a new one in its place, rather, the last two weeks of April, in order to give the teachers back that record-keeping time, the principals will not lead the one principal, the one planning, official planning period, those last two weeks. So those teachers will be able to use their planning time on that particular day any way they, they want, in accordance with what they would have been doing on the early dismissal day. So that was all that ELA, all that LOU says is that April 1st will no longer be an early dismissal day in order to accommodate testing, and we will not be replacing it with another one.
And these are all issues that we can't know, because they don't set the testing dates.
Yeah, we, we do the calendar a year in advance, kind of, so we can't blame Darrell or the calendar committee for that.
Right, not this time.
No, so, Helen, thanks to you and your team.
No, but, no, and, and I'm joking, but the, because you just don't know. But when I saw this, I was very, you know, I was like, no, this won't work, because you never know what's going to happen on a given day. Ninety-five could get shut down, we could have horrible, horrible weather, you may have to start an hour or two later, and, and the stakes are so high. So, and I appreciate David and his group agreeing and, and being able to work out this LOU that benefits our students and our teachers.
Thanks, David, from the board as well for that, because, you know, ultimately, we're here for what makes it best for our students and our staff, and so April Fools is converted to be a not April Fools.
Did not take any convincing. David was a testing coordinator, and he knew full well. And it wasn't a window, it's a date certain, so.
Yeah, okay. We'll receive your recommendation.
Recommend approval of the letter of understanding, I submit it.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any conversation? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wiles.
Thanks, Helen.
That completes all of our presentations.
That includes presentations, okay. One final item then that requires board action, and Mr. Harrell is here with us today. We directed him to create a second amendment to the superintendent's contract, and it is before us today for approval. I assume that all of you have read it and are familiar with it, so we just need a motion and a vote.
I put a motion on the floor.
Thank you, Dr. Mills, Mr. Ingersoll. Any conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Harrell, for your work on that as well. There being no other business to come before us, we are adjourned. that as well. There being no other business to come before us, we are adjourned.